Fail and diligently performs his duty professionally without complaints. He's very thorough with the checking out of maintaining the truck and the equipment assigned to him. He's also been a member of the hazmat team for that, his entire career. For 28 years he's been on that hazmat truck doing a great, great. He's certified as aircraft rescue firefighting and willingly fills in at airport when needed. He's very helpful when it comes to mentoring and sharing his abundant knowledge with new firefighters. Every aspect of Driver Armstrong has been to serve and give back to those in need. Words and awards can adequately represent the appreciation of the city of Mobile or the Fire, Mobile Fire Rescue Department. Therefore, now therefore on behalf of all citizens and our sincere thanks, we're pleased to award the certificate of recognition to him as firefighter of the month for May 2019.
Congratulations, Driver Armstrong, and nice meeting you and your family. Enjoyed that. At this time I'd ask Coach Tim Becker to please come forward with his staff if y'all would come to the podium. Coach Becker is the head baseball coach at McGill Tulane, and I think that most everybody on the city council certainly knows what they have accomplished, but this championship team was really the fifth time that Coach Becker has won a state championship, and I think it's at three different schools?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so anyway, congratulations, Coach Becker. From the mayor's office, we have a certificate of recognition, and it simply says, "The McGill Tulane baseball team is hereby officially recognized and congratulated on the landmark achievement of the 2019 state championship, a first in the 111-year history of McGill Tulane Athletic High School, done this 28th day of May in the year of 2019, and in the 317th year of the founding in the city mobile proclaimed by William S. Thompson, 108th mayor of the city." Congratulations, Coach, and congratulations, your team.
I just want to thank the city council for having us here today. I know John Williams has his McGill Tulane baseball hat on, so and I, we just were so, so happy for you allowing us to come down here to celebrate this, and I know I gave a hat to Sandy as well. We are so proud of our whole team. We had 10 seniors, we had an outstanding group of young men all the way through, we had actually some underclassmen, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen as well, but again, we're so proud of all of our seniors, and I'd like to recognize one right now because he had an outstanding playoff series when we, when we played Bob Jones. It went to three games, and it was just back and forth. It's just one of the most gratifying serieses that I've ever been part of, and I just want to have Spencer Hadley to stand up. He was our MVP of the playoff series. And this is not done alone, and the three guys that are standing behind me, Brad Sage, Tommy Walker, and Ryan Hall are all coaches that have been in our program the last three or four years, and they do an outstanding job as well, and I'd like for you to acknowledge them as well.
So, Coach Becker, if you can stay for just a moment at the podium, and John Williams, if you can come to the podium, and Luke Williams, if you would come to the podium, please. During the opportunity to visit with the team, I was finding out who the seniors were, who the juniors were, and actually, three freshmen on the team, sophomores and so forth, and finding out where they were going to school next year, especially for the seniors. And so, we were going around the room, and we got to Luke Williams, and his daddy's here by relative ability. So, anyway, Luke said, you know, "I'm going to Paris Island, going to the Marine Corps." And I just wanted to, Luke, you're here because, you're not asked to come down here because you're John's son. You're asked to come down here because of your decision to join the Marines. And I have a little book here, it's called "The T.H. Kelly Hemp," and it's written by a former Army officer, and even though you're going to be a Marine, when you, when you read this, you'll know why I gave it to you. Good luck to you, and God bless you.
Before we let these guys get away, and they can just stay standing if you're standing, my statistics are not always up to date or the most accurate, but my estimation through my sources, there's around 41 games. These guys won the very first ever, that's, no one ever will be able to say that again from McGill Tulane. They beat a very, very capable Bob Jones team, or Bob Hope team. 303 batting average for the team, 225 hits, 325 hits, excuse me, 325 hits, 23 home runs, 295 runs scored, and it took every stinking one of them to beat one of the best high school baseball teams that I've ever seen in Bob Hope. And I think our coaches will agree that this is an incredible team, that, that we're expecting big things of the juniors. Juniors, raise your hand. Look at this. That's good news for coaches in any, in any athletic organization, but they have big shoes to fill, and I congratulate you, and it's been my pleasure to watch you play. Thank you.
So, Mr. Vice President, that concludes my remarks, but I do have to be excused to go to Port Authority Board Meeting.
Well, we totally understand that, and we thank you all for coming down. Keep up both your stylistic and your athletic achievement, or let's give them another big round of applause.
All right, yes, sir. Y'all have a great one.
Monthly finance report.
Good morning.
You know, Beth Lyons seated behind me, I think, gave you a flavor of the seriousness with which we have had to study the legislative process.
Yes, sir.
Not just last year, but over the last couple of years, the large cities in Alabama have had to play defense in Montgomery in almost an unprecedented, unprecedented manner. I think the fact that the larger cities have larger revenues flowing into their cities has made cities a target for, for cash that special interests want to put in other places. The, the larger cities thankfully have, for the most part, have strong lobbyists like Ms. Lyons, and we're, we're understanding how important our relationship with our local legislators, the 13 representatives and senators that represent this area, how important that relationship is to us in, in playing that defense in Montgomery. It's probably going to be something that we have to pay increasing attention to. You know, Councilman Dave said something this morning that I think just kind of passed by a lot of people, but we are a nation of state government, and what state government can do, they can also undo. The home rule that we're so conscious and appreciative of can go away with a stroke of the pen in Montgomery. So, the way that we have to engage is not in a, on a obstructionist or offensive manner, but one that is structured on our relationship with our, our local leaders. The monthly budget report for April is seven months in out of 12, and I wanted to focus on the revenue side. We've talked about the expenditures and how everybody's doing their part. We are, we are staying with budget and the departments, but I wanted to mention a statistic to you that ties into that struggle in, in Montgomery. Year-to-date, our sales taxes going into all three funds are up about $2.6 million over last year. That's 2.2%. I'll hold that for just a second. Our SSUT distribution from the state so far is 1.44 million. We know that the effect rate of SSUT to us is 2.83% compared to our 5% city sales tax. What that means is, if there were no SSUT, we would be collecting about $1.2 million on top of that 1.4. That would yield a 3.3% increase over 2018, year-to-date. 3.3 is exactly what the state, Alabama, is up in their sales taxes year-to-date over last year. So, that, that difference is, is what is the downward pressure revenue side of, of our budget, and that's why it's so important that Ms. Lyons didn't get into the specifics, but there were actually three bills filed to, to have SSUT applied to our other use tax, which is somewhere between $13 and $20 million a year, and if you apply that 2.83% tax equivalent, that means we, we could have stood to lose $7, $8, $9 million that had passed. So, we're, we're fortunate to not. Session's not quite over yet, but it looks like none of those bills will pass, but we'll have to be prepared next session to fight even harder, I think. Our total revenues for the, for the year are up about 3.5%, and that has to do with the fact that real estate taxes are up close to $1 million, and that has to do with the assessments more than anything else that the county conducts that we don't, don't have a control over. We're happy that it, it occurs now on an annual basis as opposed to, to every four years. Also, our lodging's tax, our taxes are doing very well. We're not ahead as much this year as we were last year, but, but we still are up. That's a, a nice place to be. Cigarette taxes are up about 40, well, 35%. We think that is a product of enforcement. The state has been doing some serious audits, and our police department has been conducting criminal investigations of those who are, who are bringing tobacco products into our city that are either untaxed typically from Florida or undertaxed from other surrounding states. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Thank you for that report. It's very informative, and I noted that up was our hotel tax and also property taxes. Is there any movement to, to that Airbnb? Because a lot of cities are now doing that, and that's a very popular venue. Probably have a pretty good-sized hotel in those kind of rooms, some city.
Yes, and I appreciate your, your asking about it because it's very important as more and more people start to use Airbnb, and I guess that's really a placeholder for some other similar electronic reservation systems that are kind of off, offline. We don't, we don't see those. We are exploring that. We have looked at several model ordinances that exist with some of the other cities in Alabama. The state also recently adopted an Airbnb regulation, I think it was, and yes, so that is on the radar screen. We hope to be working with you to adopt a change in our ordinance that would subject those Airbnb-type landlords to collect, you know, it's not a tax on them, it's a collection that they perform for us on the, the people who, who actually reserve.
I think some of those electronic systems that will get you to those Airbnbs are charging the tax from our, from a user, I mean, a person who is already doing that with their home. So, I think there's a way to capture it, and I hope that we do because it's, you know, in competition to all of the rooms that are taxed, you know, because there are profiles that we can wrap our hands around. So, that, that would be good because I think there's a revenue stream there that could go towards the convention industry. The property to tax being up is also very positive, and I've, I'm in favor of reducing sales tax and, and putting our emphasis on property tax for our services, and that would be something that is a home rule, and once we would gather that up, it would be something that would stay in the community. So, it's even more of a reason to look at getting off of the sales tax and moving over towards property tax. The, all of the internet sales are only going to keep going up, and if the state is onto it and already taking a portion, you can look forward to them probably taking more in the future unless we have a different revenue, either fee for services that stay directly here and/or property taxes.
That's correct.
It's really a dialogue we need to have.
It is, and one of the other things that you have mentioned, not, not now, but also, you know, in the past, is the fact that our tourism taxes, hospitality taxes, but also the sales taxes tied to what tourists spend once they're here other than in hotels. That is such an important thing, and one of the reasons that the, the TID that you supported and that now Governor Ivey has signed into law is so important. If there's one tax that is remarkably free of any intervention by streamlined statewide tax collections, it's our tourism taxes. And, you know, being that we're one of only three states, I think, that has a local option on sales taxes, that means every dollar that is spent in the tourism area, whether it's spent by, by you, by the city in doing support of Visit Mobile, or whether it's done by the hotel industry through the TID, for example, or in private advertising that all the hotels do, all of that spending is local. So, most, most cities competitive to us don't have that ability. If, if they increase tourism spending, that goes to the state, state law and gets distributed out by population or some other factor, but when, when we lift tourism in this city, at least that five cents stays here.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. West, for that very informative report, you know, and you, as you mentioned, well, I'm going to paraphrase, you said, "We live, the, the current constitution of the state of Alabama allow the state legislature and governor to control almost any, if they choose, control almost any aspect of local government." They, they tell us what we can do and what we can't do, and limit our sources of revenue, and when they want some of that revenue, that's traditionally our source of revenue, they, they tend to take that away. This council, as my colleague, Mr. Richardson, pointed out, this council by very bold actions, twice, has extended the extra penny in the sales tax, and, and the city of Mobile has limited itself to taking action to control how much it costs to run the city government, but also taking action to increase revenues where appropriate. Each, each branch of government in the state, the legislature has its sources of rev, the state has its sources of revenue, and the municipalities have their sources of revenue. It doesn't help the cities when the state chooses to take revenue sources or take portions of revenues from sources that are traditionally those that belong to the municipalities. We have had this, this session, a very, I would call it interventionist legislature, but I think the point you made that eternal vigilance is going to be required going forward is right on point, and we need to continue to work collaboratively with not only, with our legislative delegation, but I, but I think we need to be aware of the fact that the legislature, if this session's any indication, the legislature is going to continue to attempt to involve itself in affairs purely local in interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you, council members.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move to second in a discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have, we have refused to waive the notice ordinance on June 15th on Stanton Court.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move to second in a discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing instead of the revocation of the business license for TOC One doing business as Touch of Class on Halls Mill Road.
All right, we're, we're going to, we're entering now into this public hearing for TOC One. We're going to hear from Ms. Ramon, and then we'll hear any corresponding commentary from the business owner.
Good morning.
The city council passed a resolution, I think, last week, and the gist of this hearing is, is that the Mobile Police Department was asked to conduct some investigations as to whether or not there was some illegal activity going on. At the first call, the Lyons Den, after we started researching it, we determined that it was known as a touch of class. This area that is located at 3526 Halls Mill Road, it was licensed, the city council, we gave them a business license, and it was for general entertainment venue under the license code 385.0. The touch of class business was not authorized to sell liquor, and it was not authorized to operate as an adult entertainment enterprise. However, when Mobile Police Department went out to conduct some interviews, we determined that in fact there was adult entertainment occurring. I've got our vice unit here today, and I want y'all to hear from some of the members of the vice to tell you exactly what they did when they went out to investigate this location first and half. Detective Bryant, come up and give you, give him his name and tell you what he did with the investigation.
Detective Bryant, we've started looking into Touch of Class for like, our Lyons Den since February. Since February, we have gone inside that establishment three times as undercover officers. Each, each time inside, we have never noted any comedy shows, any kind of poetry reading, or any live music shows inside the establishment. Yes, there was a large stripper pole, for lack of a better term, and also you can make , make a change over at the juice bar. They were not selling alcohol. You could approach one of the ladies, they were not walking around with pasties or anything like that as the other adult establishment. Then you could proposition the lady for a dance, and they would negotiate a price. When the music started, they would then get fully undressed. There were no pasties, there was skin-on-skin contact. This happened on three separate occasions with, I believe, up to eight officers. So, it's not like it would happen one time, it happened multiple times. The first time we went to go sight, we sighted, I believe approximately, there were seven ladies. On the second time, we sighted six ladies, and the last time, we sighted six ladies not having entertainers, entertainer's card. On the last time that we entered there, the manager was very upset at us. He even stated, he said, "That city council will not give me a license so the girls could entertainers card." So, therefore, he already admitted that he knew that he didn't have, have the permissions to function, so.
And if you would step up and state your name for the council.
I'm Detective McGee. My role in this investigation was simply to record or write down the information that was given to me once the undercovers went inside. They basically relayed the information to me of what was going in, going on inside, and then after a certain amount of time, we then went in and asked those ladies for their business, or their, their cards, which they did not have, and then we simply issued them their citations.
How many citations?
On the first issue, I believe we issued seven girl, their citations.
Seven, six, seven.
Yeah, seven the first time, six on the second two occurrences, and we also issued the owner a citation for operating in entertainment within 1,000 feet of a residential zone.
Did you issue females more than one citation?
Yes, we actually, there was on one instance, the first time I went in, I was in the undercover, undercover, I sighted this young lady. When we went in, and the second time, when I walked in, she immediately addressed me because I'd made some, this ruse, said it was my birthday. When I walked in, she says, "Oh, it's not your birthday," therefore she knew I was a police officer. The third time I walked in, she was there again, and she made a statement saying, "Oh, it's not, it's not your birthday again." So, we've, it's not like we're citing completely different women every single time. There's a ongoing circle of the same employees.
We'll open it up to questions if you have any questions from the officers. We also have other officers who are also in different capacities, working that, the three different occasions, and the city's position at this time, or the police, police department's position is that we ask that you revoke their business license. They're operating outside of the confines of what they were, they were, they came down for. It is not an entertainment, well, it's an adult entertainment. They're within the area of a school, that area is not zoned for adult entertainment. If they want to do adult entertainment, they have to follow the rules, and they have to go within that zoning area, but to allow them to stay there after three repeated visits by the Mobile Police Department, there's knowledge that they are operating outside of the law, and there is, at this point, we're asking that you revoke that business license. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Just one question.
Ms. Reddick?
Ms. Ramon, so you were saying that the manager and the owner knew that they were operating outside the law?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and, and also, there have been Facebook posts by the owner stating that he's going to continue to operate and, you know, asking the public to come out to his venue on, on the weekend. So, the manager was there, spoke with our office, knew that they weren't supposed to be doing it, and yet, two additional times, we come back, and not only they're dancing, but dancing completely nude, and that is still, that's, we don't even allow that. You got to have your pasties, so they would put their pasties on when they were not on the stripper pole, but then when they're on the stripper pole, they'd take the pasties off. If you had an individual lap dance, they're completely naked, which is something that we don't allow in, in the city of Mobile.
Any further questions for Ms. Ramon or any of our officers here?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you do. Is there anyone else that would like to, as we continue this particular hearing dealing with the?
Touch of Class.
Touch of Class One, doing business at Touch of Class, 3526 Halls Mill Road. Is there anyone else that would like to offer any commentary from the owner's side of the, owner's perspective?
Yes, sir.
You may, may come down.
Hello. I'm Joe Johnson. I'm the owner of the Lyons Den and Touch of Class. I'm the owner of the Lion's Den and Touch of Class. This is my first time being in front of the city council, so.
Yes, sir. If you could, state your name and your address for the record, and then you'll have an opportunity to, in some instances, refute what it is that they've alleged, they brought forward today rather.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Johnson.
Yes, sir.
And you want my home address or my business address?
Your home is fine.
Okay, 4060 Grand Bay Wilmer Road South in Mobile. Okay, I owned the Lion's Den for six years, okay? Never had any violations, never broke the law, never, in fact, I employed off-duty police officers to make sure that there was no prostitution, no drugs, nothing that could give myself or my business a bad name, all right? Said that business was open for six years, and it was ran, it was operated the exact same way as Touch of Class, the business that we're trying to take my business license for. Same exact way, everything the same exact way. This, this business is located in an industrial park, okay? The Lion's Den that I operated for six years was located on Dolls Road, Theodore Dolls Road, and directly behind my business was an apartment complex, okay? It was an apartment complex, other homes. This business that I have right now is, there is not a home, or a school, or a church within 3,000 feet, okay? Now, what zoning is saying is that there is, it is residential zoning near the area, but there's no homes, zero, no churches, no schools. The residential zoning that they are saying is across the street, about 50 acres of wooded area, wooded area. There are two other clubs in this town, in Mobile. One is on Airport Boulevard, and directly behind the business is a neighborhood. There's another one on Intermiss Corner, and then three or 400 feet, there's a church. My place on Halls Mill, like I said again, is located over 3,000 feet away from any church, school, or home. Now, I've been in this business for 22 years, okay, and I've actually had this same situation come up, you know, in Baltimore, Maryland, that's where I'm originally from, Baltimore, Maryland. I had to go through the same situation, and I ended up going all the way to the Supreme Court with it, and I won, because it's a constitutional matter. I understand, you know, this business is frowned upon by everyone, but it is a legal business, and I know, I know how to obey the law, okay, and I, so, you know, it is, it is your decision, and you, you know, the council can revoke my license if it's, you know, if it's, that's the decision that you come to. Can I, can I direct a question to Ms. Williams?
No.
Oh.
Just through the chair, just ask your question.
Oh, okay, is that you? All right. My place that I had in Theodore, okay, on Theodore Dolls Road, like I said, I was allowed to operate there for most, for six years, okay? My landlord, I was leasing the building, all right? My landlord is, I just want to know, is, does he have any relation to my landlord who I rented my place from and operated the same exact business? I just want to, I just want to know. Does he have any relation to the landlord who owned that property?
Does Mr. Williams have?
Yes, yes.
Is he talking about blood?
Any kind of relation, well.
I have relation to everybody in the city.
He says he has relation to everybody.
Okay, a direct relation.
Yeah, a direct relation.
Okay, from what I understand, all right, he had, from what I understand, he was in-law to the person who owned the property.
Not at all. Not even, not at all.
Okay, okay, well, the reason I ask that is because if, it's just kind of strange that I was allowed to do this same business in that building, but in this, in this location, which is morally located, you know, better as far as schools, churches, and homes, I'm getting so much, so much static, you know, for it.
Mr. Chair, I think the time is up further than questioning, but my comment, you may want to just let you know that there's a difference between being in the city and not in the city, and this is in the city of Mobile.
Theodore Dolls Road.
It's definitely in the city. I always want to clarify that, because there is no zoning out in the county.
Right, I understand.
And I don't know what the rules are on business license and whatnot, so that would be your fir, you can't compare, that's apples and oranges, okay?
Yes, I understand.
And we do have zoning in the city, and if property is designated, then even if it's not in use, it is considered only for that type of use. So if it's R1 where you are, it is residential. The other thing about, there was something else you mentioned.
The grandfather.
Yeah, yeah, the two locations that you mentioned in our city limits that don't make code are because they were grandfathered in, okay?
Okay.
Do you know what that means?
Yes, understanding.
So they were there before the law was passed, and they get to stay there, unfortunately.
All right. The location that I'm at, like I said, that I really thought was zoned properly, was a, it's, it's been a bar for over 50 years, liquor, selling liquor, a bar lounge, and at some, at one point, for about five or six years, at that same exact location, it was a gentleman's club.
Well, Mr. Johnson?
Sir.
Mr. Johnson, your time has expired.
Okay, okay.
You know, our rules are pretty well cut and dry in some respects. We're going to know where it's appropriate to zone, and where it's not, then the authorities have brought it to our attention, and subsequently made these reports.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming down, we appreciate you coming down. I don't know.
And everything they said was true, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everything they said, the police officers said, was true, except for one thing, they just got misunderstood. I never, we never said that we know we don't, we don't have license, or we never admitted to that. What they got mixed up is, they were talking about the entertainer's cards, the girls having entertainer's license, well, they were trying to go get their licenses, but city is not recognizing it as a adult entertainment club, they weren't allowed to. So that's what they were talking about with the licenses. We never admitted or said anything about, "We know we're wrong," or "We know we're not licensed." It was about the girls getting entertainer's cards, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, that's, that's pretty much it, all.
Okay.
And we appreciate you coming down.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Williams.
And just to kind of put things in perspective a little bit, the city of Mobile does not allow adult entertainment unless you're specifically permitted, specifically permitted to have an adult entertainment establishment. You make a mistake once, "Oh, I did not know," I'll close this down until I'm legitimately permitted after, after the time. The second time, by all the reports that we've been given, we can either completely throw them out, or accept them as they've been written by the detectives and by our found the same activity. And even when I personally, who drive down that road three or four times a day, and a couple times nightly, saw the activity, what appeared to be completely gone, vice goes back again here recently, like four weeks ago, and didn't find less activity, found more activity. And what happened at one location and another is irrelevant. This is irresponsible ownership, and if it were in my power, and I'm not sure the council attorney can say, but I think with our revocation needs to come a period of time when there is no business run by this owner in this city. Three strikes, you know, we just had a baseball team, not being funny, but that's, that's enough. One time, I could have seen some leniency, but three times, we've, we've put our officers and our police department to a great extent of effort, and a thorough report, and it's just time for a unanimous vote to say no more in this city. So can we put a time limit? Because what I hope would not happen is that next week, that we have an application from the same ownership to, to operate in the city in the same manner, which has been in a different location.
Madam Counselor, Attorney, and I think, this way.
It's my understanding that the procedures relating to these types of matters, you've held the public hearing today, a resolution will be prepared to be voted on next week, the resolution will recite the evidence, so that there will be a written decision of what, of what your, of what the evidence is, so that you can consider that next week. I don't think to take any action today. For clarity, whether you have an adult entertainment license or not, no one is allowed to dance completely nude anywhere. So I think there was some misunderstanding about that.
And Mr. Chairman, that's what leads me to, and this is not a personal thing, I, we allow by ordinance, adult entertainment in the city of Mobile under restriction, and have been admitted that everything that the officer said was true, except for the business license comment, says that there were lap dances going on, completely nude, that there were dancing going on, completely nude, that there was dancing without licenses, and all done multiple times, three different visits where activity of this sort was found. This, this does not display responsible ownership. This is not, this is not personal on anybody or any location, but simply says that we have to respect the law, and that hasn't happened.
I saw, Mr. Johnson, your time has expired, but you certainly willing to communicate with us to the degree that you, that you can, if your time in this format has expired.
Mr. Chairman, you can come back next week. We're going to address it next week, and it'll be a agenda item.
Next week, uh?
Thursday?
Certainly, well, next Thursday at?
10:30.
11 o'clock.
10:30.
10:30.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Conclude the hearing.
Mr. Richardson.
Okay. I wanted to get some clarity from Councilman Williams. Were you saying that you would like for any other business that he operate to, for the license, license to be revoked also?
I didn't think of it in that perspective. Mr. Chairman, I did not think of it in that manner.
Okay, okay.
I thought about a new, a new biz for the purpose of the same, to be not necessarily granted for a certain period of time, and I just don't know what the law says, whether I can apply it next week, or whatever the case is. Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Okay. Any further questions, whether, either Ms. Richardson or Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Now, I would move forward.
Close the hearing.
Any further comments of this particular pub here? Not pub here, Ms. George.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Bob Allen.
My name's Bob Allen, my address is 959 Augusta Street. I'm not here representing any organization or anyone other than myself, and I'm not here to complain about anything, and I'm not here to ask you to do anything, other than maybe consider what I have to say. Over the past few months, I've sat in this chamber a few times and listened as various controversies have been submitted to the council for resolution, and it's occurred to me, it's times that sometimes some of the basic information about the controversies has been lost. So I would like to take a few minutes and tell you about my neighborhood, the Oakley Neighborhood, because as far, as far as that, there's no controversy there now. I think I'm qualified to talk to you about the Oakley Neighborhood, because my wife and I have lived there for 40 years. We bought our first house in Oakley in 1979 at 959 Charleston Street. If we were buying that house today in the condition it was in when we bought it, it would be, could be blighted, and there would be a petition before you to demolish it. Thankfully, that didn't happen. We bought it, we rehabilitated it, and now it's a contributing asset to the neighborhood. The house was built in 1868 by Thaddeus Partridge, who operated a hardware store in downtown Mobile. As his family grew, the house grew, wing was added, the back was added on to several times. In the 1890s, a second story was added. During World War II, the house was divided into three apartments to accommodate the increase in population of Mobile that was here for the war effort. We worked on the house for a year before we could move into it, and another six years to all of its issues. And in a sense, the house is a microcosm of Mobile, as far as I can see. A simple residence built right after the end of the Civil War, when the city and its residents were struggling, a house that grew as the city grew, a house that provided shelter for an increased population due to the war effort, and a house that would have been lost except for private initiative and investment, and now is a vibrant part of the neighborhood. Both of our children were born, we were in the house, raised in the neighborhood. When they went off to college and were out on their own, the house was more than we needed, so we sold it and bought a house at 959 Augusta Street, same street address, one street over. That was a move that the post office is still struggling with. 959 Augusta Street is a bungalow built in 1940, and it represents the neighborhood too, because a lot of the houses that are sold in the Oakley Neighborhood are actually sold to people who already are in the neighborhood. I have the opportunity to study neighborhoods, some older, some newer, some in Mobile and some in other, other cities, and I believe that the strength of the Oakley Neighborhood is in its diversity. I have neighbors who are white, neighbors who are African-American, neighbors who are of Oriental descent, there are couples whose children are grown, there are couples who are raising their children, there are couples who are newly married, just starting their lives there. There are widows and widowers, and single people. I have neighbors who are gay, and neighbors who are straight. There are professionals and blue collar workers, there are doctors, preachers, professors, lots of diversity. lots of diversity, diversity in uses. We have single-family residences, apartments, a retirement home, businesses. Callahan's has just been selected as the best bar in the South, Sausage Q has the best barbecue in the city. Griffith Service Station is the only service station I know of that's subject of a play written by a neighbor. It comes down to this for me. The diversity in the neighborhood, people-wise, architecture-wise, use-wise, is a natural phenomenon. It's not the result of any program or policy or ordinance or law. And for me, that's the core of the neighborhood, is it's real. Thank you.
Reggie Hill.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, to the administration, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven, Simms Street. I rise today to speak about looking into how we can work towards our budget for the next full year. As many times before, all of my statements are in regards to how we can improve the quality of life of City Mobile, particularly related to our safety measures. I would like to commend the Civic Engagement Department for their strategic push through the yes initiatives to try and circumvent some of the issues that we have been seeing within the city, and I would encourage the approval from the council of the consent resolution being introduced today, which is number zero eight dash five zero six, which would allow us to expand those services within that program. And speaking of the allocation of resources, I was asked to present a meaningful view of what should look like a plan for the city of Mobile. And I could see forty thousand, community reinvestment grant to be distributed evenly amongst the seven council districts. This will increase discretionary spending to a needed seventy-two thousand dollars within each of those districts. I believe this is very beneficial because we hear oftentimes from our council members where there aren't enough resources to be distributed amongst all the ideas that are within the council district. I believe this will also afford those organizations who do have formal plans to come to the table, even if a minimal amount can be added, so that we can see some plan of action in place. So this is something that will be very easy. Simple forty-nine thousand dollar increase to the council discretionary spending. I believe our finance committee chairman, he would argue that the practice of reservation has been a primary tool and a source for our fiscal stability in the city of Mobile. I would like to also see that same type of in-spirit practice implemented when we look at city unemployment raises. Using that two-point-five percent model, I believe that our first tiers should be through Parks and Recreation, the Mobile Archives, and I would also like to see where we implement what was planned the previous full year for our public workers. That spirit, where we came in with public safety, we took that out initially, and then we can now move in and eventually gradually get to all departments, gradually get to all departments, so that we can keep that fiscal stability that I believe our finance director often speaks of, as well as the committee chairman also speaks of. I would like to see, as I address a couple of weeks previously, a hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar increase into performance contracts. This would put a flat line of five million dollars. Now, we look at an average of ten to twenty-five thousand dollars that are added to organizations through performance contracting, we will see a minimum of at least ten to fifteen new ideas that can come to the table to help improve the quality of life for the city of Mobile. And if we're looking at the one-point-six million dollars that has been presented as resources that have been found within the city, and we don't have a clear estimate of what the exact resources are, I believe there are probably a lot more, but we're not even touching the tier of the half-million-dollar market with all of these proposals that have been put on the place today. Today, we're not even touching the half-million-dollar tier. And if we're actually to truly invest in these things, we can see where it actually would bring about great big change that we need within the city. Now, with all great things, one must plan ahead, and I believe as one of Mobile, we should be planning ahead as well, to improve again this quality of life. And we need tangible results, we need things that have worked, things that have been put in place before, and actually give the results that we desire. And this should be leaning towards public peace, public equity, and public justice. This is why I'm necessary to introduce these particular ideas now. With as many things that are going on, we need to already be looking at how we can expand our resources, so that we can actually do those progress that is needed. As I have done year after year, I'm going to provide written material as well to actually back up these initiatives that I believe could really help our city. As well, I'm going to map out a plan of where these resources will come from and how the evaluation will be best used to improve our city. And I want to thank the chairman for the opportunity to speak. I send my congratulations to the McGill baseball team, that's very difficult as a Murphy Panther to say, but I do send my congratulations to them in bringing that home, and I extend my sentiments to all those members of Mobile who are memorializing their fallen family members over the past few days. Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Rich?
Yes. The budget director is over there, so I would just say that you're not going to get anywhere by submitting that to us. The budget is, by the Zogby Act, the budget has to be put together by the administration, and you got the director of finance here, so if you have something you want to give to them that could help them with the budget, I think you ought to pass it, go ahead and give it to them.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I think that Mr. Hill is on to something. In fact, I have been quoted, and rightfully so, to some of the nonprofits, the comments that I made nonprofits, that said that I do believe that they make a big difference in what we are able to do as a city. We can't do some of the things, we can't do what they do. And so, should there be an increase? I'm not sure, but I do believe that there should be a percentage of our budget that we all agree to, that goes to nonprofits and goes to those type of organizations that serve the people of Mobile. And so, I'm going to introduce that, and I hope that at some point, I've asked the nonprofits to contact the administration as well, and maybe as we get into this discussion closer to the budget, that maybe we can get a peek at the budget, some of the ideas, maybe not the numbers and the whole paper, but at least kind of a direction that we think we might go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Davis?
I'd like to respond to Mr. Williams, and I don't, you know, I don't necessarily disagree with the idea that a certain portion of the budget ought to be devoted to the work that nonprofit organizations do, they're a vital part of our community, and many, many of them are work, especially with respect to health and social services that the city cannot do. I do think, however, that we need to look, a strong, hard look at how, whatever amount of money that is, five million dollars, ten million dollars, whatever amount of money that is, I think we need to take a strong look at how that money is distributed, and we need to get away from automatically giving an organization X amount of money every year. And what we ought to have is we ought to have a competitive process where every year, any nonprofit organization that wants funding for that particular year comes forward and offers us a plan on how that money is going to be spent and how it will impact the community. And then, based on that process every year, we make grant funding. And I think that would be a much more robust process. The process we have now, where we just roll it over every year, I don't think is very competitive and very effective.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to Mr. Davis.
Your turn has expired, but there's still comment left here.
Well, I was just standing in concert with him, and that's something for the record, which I've stated for years.
But is anything else that anybody would like to offer? You're welcome to sit down. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
I appreciate everyone's comments about all these nonprofits in our city.
Who was that?
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. The administration does keep a book and ask questions and looks for certain benchmarks to be met, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we do look for minimum standards, and those include audits and presentation of financial statements each year. To be honest, over the last several years, there has not been a competitive process. What you see is essentially what you've seen in the past, and, you know, a competitive process was started a few years ago, it did not work for a variety of reasons, but, you know, the administration is certainly open to talking about. You know, I think what all of council members have said thus far is absolutely true. Performance contracts are not evil, they are designed to have nonprofit agencies perform services that are municipal services, who can do it more easily and inexpensively than the city could engage in those areas, and so they certainly serve a purpose.
When you get a report, does it include the number of people that they serve? Is that within, in the scope of questions? Because I think that would be very important, to see how widespread and what their success is.
Not currently, no. Would you not?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
As we talk about performance contracts, for those of us who've been on the council a very long time, you probably remember the documents that organizations were required to fill out, and those documents said that the funds that the city was providing were on a temporary basis, that it was based more for seeding purposes and not for a permanent fix. But over the years, it has become a permanent fix, and every organization that has received money plans their budget around getting this money from the city. So if we're going to change this process?
You've got to do it now.
We've got to do it now, and decide how this sort of competition for the dollars will be handled. We've had groups come into our meetings who stood and cried because we were looking at making changes in how these funding mechanisms were done. So if there's to be a change, it needs to be done now and not waiting until the budget actually hits our desk.
No, I agree with Councilwoman Bervie. I think it would be unfair to try to impose this change in the immediately upcoming budget cycle. But I think that if we are going to change and have a more robust process, what I would say, you know, it's zero start funding, then we need to start working on it for the next budget cycle. So, and do it with committee meetings and let everybody know that it's down the pike, so that there's complete understanding. Thank you.
Vice President.
Mr. Spock?
Yeah, I would just like to say, warning out, you know, to the administration and also to the council, and not just a warning, but a reminder, that, you know, a lot of these nonprofit organizations is what, you know, helps to move, you know, the city forward, like Mr. Williams says, that some of the agencies are doing things that the city cannot do, from homeless to mental illness. Today, we don't even have a mental illness facility, you know, most of us besides altar point. And a couple of years ago, you know, the city has cut back, you know, these performance contracts. Right now, the Boys and Girls Club are grumbling, you know, they're letting go different staff members and cutting back on different programs, and we keep cutting, 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 you know, our society is going to be, you know, worse than what it is today. So we have to be very careful of what agencies that we do cut. Do some of them need to be cut or monitored? I do agree, but you have to be very cautious and careful which one you do, because again, if you cut, say, prime altar point, that's putting more hindrance on the city with all the crime that we have going on today. Thank you.
And I would like to, Chairman, it is in the Zogby Act that the city should put money aside, for the least among us, it is in the Zogby Act. And I would consider the seniors to be a part of that group, and what we have seen in the years, the spirit of cutting back, it's what we've cut veal back to the extent that they were getting ready to close. I don't favor anything like that. When it comes down to the children and to the seniors, we need to be careful in that respect. You know, they say, there's nothing for the youth to do, no, because they don't report to the city, so we don't have nothing directly for the seniors to do, but we fund these organizations that can provide something for them to do, and we need to continue to do that. And there's a number of them that we do fund, but I don't have nothing against, I'm going at all of these organizations and seeing where we are, but we're going to need to continue to fund organizations that's dealing with our youth and our seniors.
Chief Presnell, and this is regarding the wrecker ordinance.
I'm going to forehand and let Mr. Smith speak, he is the voter, I'm going to say that material, if you need to, for a third job.
Gary Smith?
Mr. Smith, sign up.
Yes, Gary Smith.
Okay, come on down, Mr. Smith. We did decide to leave this item over again.
Two weeks.
One additional tour.
I understand that, but I'm already taking time out of my business each time we forward it up and everything. So I would like to speak today and then go from there.
Can we submit this for the record? Could you provide us with a copy of that as well, so that we can go back later on in breakfast?
What I have here, I can send an email to y'all, to every one of y'all, if that's what y'all would like to do.
Yes, sir.
But good morning, how y'all doing today? Reason I'm here today is for the wrecker industry to discuss the opposition to the council proposed to amend Chapter thirteen for the Mobile City Code pertaining to the rates of the wrecker service. Before I continue, I'd like to take a moment to note that the changes being discussed here today or by email are not those that y'all have been looking at as previously read, nor voted on since the introduction going back to March twenty-sixth. In fact, there's numerous differences between what has been submitted to the council and all the previous submissions. Ladies and gentlemen, while the ordinance governing the tow industry is outdated, it is also one-sided, it has never fully been enforced. It leads to unconstitutional practices. Those of us who own and operate the private wrecker companies that this ordinance pertains to has not once been asked for any advice or input of a subject matter that affects our business on a daily basis. As it stands, if this is passed, the ordinance will increase company expenses, payrolls, and possibly send employees to the unemployment line and shut down small businesses. Further, I'd like to point out for discussion a few items. Under the approved rates for the towing services provided, the amount one can charge for towing a vehicle that's weighing less than ten thousand pounds is to be increased from one-twenty-five to one-fifty. That's an amount of twenty percent increase. However, the authority to charge for an additional wrecker on the scene has been stopped from the new proposed ordinance. While a large wrecker company will see an increase from one-fifty to three-fifty, or an approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-three percent increase in pay, they have the liberty to charge a hundred-and-fifty dollars for to charge $150 for each additional wrecker. Further being added to compensate those who already deep pockets in the ability to charge 450 for a rotator with an additional $150 per hour for additional. Additionally, both current standing ordinance as well as the proposed vision have not only contradictions to insurance requirements, but neither of the requirements, excuse me, that actually meet state or federal requirements. Moreover, the requirements being set forth for private wrecker companies such as being equipped with a fire extinguisher, flares, boom, shovel, axe, having timer strengths, the mandatory degree that one must carry oil, dry, clear debris, these are all such requirements that the Mobile Police Department do not even adhere to with their own wreckers. Example is, we go to a scene, they're going to impound a wrecker. It's a wreck. For whatever reason, they decide to impound the vehicle. They take it. We're the ones with all the equipment on the truck. We're the one that has to clean the streets up. When asked why do you not have to do it? They're the police. So if they're going to make the totes, same accident, same we are at, then we expect them to do the same thing. Finally, an amendment presents for no grace period to be compliant with provisions that would be added. If passed, a compliant wrecker company's service could become non-compliant immediately after your voting yes, notwithstanding the aforementioned the Mobile Police Department lack of personnel or attentiveness or lack in efficiency to ensure the inspection was carried out in a timely manner. Example inspection supposed to be done by September 15th. All the companies have renewed their leases, business licenses, met zoning requirements, paid for their insurances. The inspection was not done until March 18th through the 22nd of this year, after everybody renewed all their stuff.
That's pretty much where the time, any questions?
Yeah, beneath that.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you get that to us.
Yes, sir, I will.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Small.
I have two questions. How long you say you've been in business?
Our business been in there for 12. It's a family-run business. Now me and my brother running.
And how much percentage of your business come from the city, would you say?
Actually, very little. Actually, very little. I mean, we average 11, with the locations that I have, we average about 11 calls per week for the city of Mobile. And I'd give 11 calls, you know, 40% of the vehicles out there today actually have good insurance practices. But 60% of the vehicles that are on the road today either have no insurance whatsoever, or they can't afford full coverage, so they tote the general liability, which means if they're involved in an accident and we tow that thing in, stick it in our lot, we get it dumped with us. Okay, then we have to go into the other side of having to pay the state of Alabama to get permission to get rid of that vehicle. The total process of that is a little over $100, out-of-pocket expense, not counting your man hours and stuff like that. So, I mean, for them to propose this and want it in a immediate deal, I just don't see where that's right when they're not paying us for everything. There's not that kind of business with it. We're trying to provide a, a business for the city of Mobile, police department, communities, and the public.
So again, what is your, just approximately your percentage, would you say 10% of your business come from the city, 20, 12, 8, 5?
I would say, without sitting down and looking at the numbers, I would say I probably have a 40%.
40% is not a little.
Sir.
40% is not little. Yeah.
A little bit, is what you're saying.
Right.
So you only have 28 or 26 halls a month? Is that what you, that's for you?
Yeah, that sounds about right. You know, for the actual police department.
That's a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Any further question? Is your email to us, do you make recommendations on the price point that you think?
Well, I mean, oh, as far as the pricing and stuff like that, I mean, basically what I'm asking is for y'all just throw this ordinance out. We've been dealing this since 1980. It's been revised, Smith.
Mr. Smith, we're not doing that. We're a little further down the road than probable. We would imagine that we need to, hey, there's something, but we shouldn't want to assist them to what you all might all.
Right. Okay, well, if not thrown out, let's put a committee together to where you take, and y'all can do the picking. You know, there's 40 companies in the city of Mobile. Pick out the people that's been doing this for 50 years or 20 years. Let them sit down with whoever y'all decide to put in, you know, to oversee this. And let's come up with a ordinance that's fair to police, is fair to the small companies, the big companies, it's also fair to the public. But I mean, to have one person write something up is not fair.
Do you live here?
Yes, I do.
In the city of Mobile?
I live just outside city police jurisdiction.
Yes, outside.
But I operate businesses in the city of Mobile.
I'm just curious as to whether you live in the city or not, because I have not heard from President Smith, you live in the city, you've been in the back of the country.
But have you asked to address this?
We're going to hold it over two weeks, Mr. Smith. And in that time, you'll have the opportunity to communicate with all of us as to what you think your wishes ought to be. There's been a city, a citizens room.
There's been one, I understand.
There's been citizens room, that's been, you know, in line, since this issue started with industry, leaders of the industry in this particular neighborhood. And the administration has handled that. So we'll land item over to you.
Okay. Well, I mean, I've been to every meeting since this started on March, March 1st meeting.
Yes, sir.
I've never seen no citizens there to put input in on any of it.
Well, they probably wouldn't be at that particular meeting, it's going to be the committee meeting. But you have to get with the administration.
Mr. Chair.
The industry be it, and the administration be it. And so I'm hopeful the next couple of weeks, all of them will be brought to form.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gray.
As you were speaking about the committee meetings, I was just asking Mrs. Rich, who chaired one of our committees, looking at this, who was a part of the committee meetings that I know Director Barber and the police department were working through? And then we also had committee meetings here at Government Plaza. So I don't know if maybe you were not invited or know about it or what the problem was. But we have had citizen input or industry input at both the police department and here at Government Plaza during committee meetings.
Okay, now, we have gone upstairs and had a couple of meetings. We've had a couple of meetings take place over there at the WAC.
Okay.
The very first time they approached all of us, we had our first meeting on March 4th. There was approximately 28 companies there that showed up for that meeting. Each individual meeting of, after that, it dropped down one company by one. And reason being is because they were, nobody was notified for them, as what they're telling me. In each one of those meetings that we've had, and if I remember correctly, it's been a total of four, I have not seen any, any meeting. And our meetings has mainly been with Barber, Batiste, and Roy Hodges.
Right, right. And that's, that's who we turn to. As Mrs. Rich just said, the meetings that you all have been having with the police department, with Director Barber and his staff, are just that. Then they come to us with whatever the, the group is from, you're told, has come together and put on paper and brings up to us. And then we start our committee meetings and trying to go through and find some sort of resolution, which is what Mrs. Rich was working on in her committee. So that's where we are. If you all have not been included with the police department, you need to take it up with Director Barber and say that this is not what we have agreed to. We want something different. Because we've got to go through a decision one way or the other.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're looking at what we have before us, and we know we've got to make some changes in it.
Right.
But we're not throwing out the whole thing and starting over.
Well, I mean, it's just, you know, each page has something that's contradicting, but we'll move past that. And I understand what you're saying, but when we go to these meetings with them, and I have some of the other members back here that have the businesses, we are dictated to what they want the changes to be. We try to put the input in, but usually we're, we're said, hold on, we're moving on to something else. We don't, we're not accomplishing anything on the meetings with just strictly a couple in the police department.
I, I think you're going to send us an email with the problems that you see in this. And do you have the latest?
Yes, I do.
You have the latest version?
Well, I have the one that was given out last week.
Okay, we've got one from today that we got information. And if Lisa or Wanda, if y'all have that, if you, we always make sure that they get copies of what we received this morning, then when you send us your email with things that you think need to be changed, that you have a problem with, we can at least see it at that point.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think there are any changes.
Well, they may not be, but.
Yeah, I mean, what I have is what was emailed as part of council last week after the meeting.
And we were given information about charges they investigated.
Yeah.
I got it.
This morning.
Mr. Chair.
I just want to let you know, I heard you loud and clear on the grace period. Certainly there is something there that we can, that we can address. And by law, I think changes have to be, have to be advertised and plus another additional period of time. Is that a couple of weeks, Ms. Cochran? Is that, is that generally speaking about what it takes to?
Not for an ordinance, not for a regular ordinance.
So it's still seven days these days, at least seven days before.
It has to be, ever how long it takes the advertising is. So probably.
Yep. But, but I hear you on grace period, it needs to be more than a week. And we'd be interested to know what you think is reasonable on that as well. Send in that email when you, when you sent it.
Well, if they want to do the inspection every two years, bring it up next time. We've already paid our money to do this business now. We bought our business licenses. I mean, and we went through inspection. We've got a sticker on our trucks that says, everything y'all did is within compliance. Thank you. And we were sent out. So next inspection, if they want to change it, we've got until then to come up with an agreement. And if they want to propose it before inspection date, we sign off on it, they sign off on it, then when they do inspection, it goes into effect right there, right then. No grace period accepted, because everybody will come out in.
But thank you again, Mr. Smith, and we look forward to our opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Irene Anton, this is regarding.
Well, you sound great in the mic.
You sound great. Keep going.
We're here.
Resolution 21492.
What's she speak, what's she?
Resolution 21492. Tennis courts.
When you add a sandbox, not a tennis court, no, that, the tennis court has, is not falling down, is not sinking, and you need to upgrade that tennis court. When I talked about it the other time, you come out after six of the trains, but the tennis court or the trains, they need.
Madam Cameron.
Okay.
I have spent a considerable amount of funds and figures to restore that court in to a first-class manner. And I have driven by there on numerous occasions. And when I counted up to the people that was out there playing tennis, it came to zero. It is completely restored, new nets, new all of that. All we need now, we need citizens to go out there and hit the ball. That's what we need now. The court has been, now Ms. Anton was right initially about the court, but I was bound and determined if it took $3 million to fix the court. So we fixed it. So it's not sinking, it's level, and it's ready for whoever would like to play to go out and play.
All right, I'm looking out on the door of the court. Don't go in there and play. All right, thank you, sir.
Take care.
Okay, do you play tennis?
Thank you.
I'm a whistle tennis player.
Now, now.
Okay.
Hello.
I play baseball, I play basketball, the shower today, and they call him to show me my child.
Okay.
He gets every little ball.
Sounds like a lot.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Ordinance is held over 63012, amend Chapter 660 of the Mobile City Code pertaining to rates for service.
Move to layover two weeks.
My most second in discussion, not on the table.
Aye.
Close, I go two.
Consent resolutions held over 37455, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off premises on license for City Market Chevron on Government Street.
Second.
Probably move to second in discussion. I had an opportunity to meet with this advocate. They told a couple clients, I think they're going to do a great job. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, I go two.
CIP resolutions held over 21492.
Second.
Probably move to second in discussion, that's it. If not, Mr. Smith, I'm for it. These are significant.
These are significant improvements to Joe Bailey Park, which is a nice little park between Magnolia Road and Lundy's Lane in District 5 in the southern part, I guess you could say the southeastern portion of District 5. It's a nice shaded park. There's plenty of room in there. And there's a little children's playground, but the tennis courts are, were in really, really, really bad shape. And so after a great deal of public improvement, we had a charrette where the neighborhoods, the nearby neighborhoods could comment on what they like. And then it, then a larger email solicitation of comments on what the park should look like. And a master plan was developed. And so this is site improvements. This is improving the tennis, I think it's probably a complete rebuild of the tennis courts. And the tennis courts will have pickleball, will be pickleball adaptable. It reflects the wishes, not only the nearby neighborhood, but many residents in these, as a whole. And so I'm very excited this project in District 5 is moving forward. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, I oppose.
Resolutions held over 01493, authorize agreement with Cannon Cochran Management Services to serve as third-party administrative of the city's self-insurance program. 014944, authorize supplemental agreement, number one, with Baskerville Donovan, Inc. for Ziegler Boulevard widening. 214995, authorized contract with Dodge Figures and Sons for pedestrian bridge over Water Street. 21496, 497, and 498 are authorizing professional services contracts for Stacy Dallas, Willier, Brandy Batiste, and Emma Kate Hancock, victim advocate Department of Justice Sexual Assault Kit Initiative. 21499, authorized contract with Amerson Roofing for Public Works Garage Roof Repairs. 2500, authorized contract with Industrial Mowing for right-of-way mowing for Michigan Avenue and Dolphin Street. 2151, authorized contract with E. Carnell Malone Corporation for Animal Shelter Kennel Roof Enclosure. 31502, apply and accept funding from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for Mobile Bay Shore Habitat Conservation and Acquisition Initiative Phase Two. 37503, approve certificate of public convenience and necessity to Dalton Fawn doing business as Modern Limousine. 6504, resolution consenting to the public education building of, of the advance of schools to Board of School Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
Probably move to second in the discussion.
President. Menze?
Yes.
Yes, on 31-502, I'd like to thank the administration for working so hard with this great project. This project has been going on for several years. Again, this is like the second phase of, of this project. It's a $6.4 million. It's a $6.4 million project with a local match, which is coming from my CIP malls and other private groups. This is really much is for the restoration of the shoreline in the south DIP area, cagacking and other shorelines, with the water down in the south end of DIP. This $6.4 million grant would not only be great for the south end of DIP, but for great for the citizens of Mobile to have more access to the water. And again, I'd like to thank the administration and for working so hard to move this forward and looking for great things to come, especially in the south end of DIP. Thank you.
Any further comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gregory.
On 01-44, it's authorizing the supplemental agreement for the widening of Ziegler. While this is another step forward, it is still something that we are waiting on the railroad to finish and get back to us with the final agreement so that we can actually start construction. We've been working on trying to widen Ziegler Boulevard as long as I've been on the council and even before. So, again, this is a step forward. We are at least getting there. This has done its part. We are just now waiting on the railroad to send us back the final agreement and get a few other things done. Very soon, we should be able to actually start construction with widening Ziegler from Forest Hill Road all the way down to Schillinger. They are two separate projects, but there is a likelihood that they could be going on at about the same time. So, again, I'm at least happy to see this, even though we are still all very frustrated.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's passed.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 08505 through 6522.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of resolutions on 08505 through 6522.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
08505, approve item-based bid for herbicides. 08506, approve bid for bus service to transport yes program participants starting June 8th. 08507, approve purchase order requisitions over $7,500 for the week of May 20th. 31508 authorized, 31508 and 509, authorizing grant application for fiscal year 2019 to Port Security Grant Program and Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, both a known local match. 37510, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special events retail license to title bottles, oh, you're holding that one over, right?
No.
Oh, yeah, bottles up LLC for Fee Fest on Conti Street. 588511, declare Wees Noxious Group 1592. 6512 and 513 are proven awards, a special bonus to the Office of the Month, April 2019, and for Firefighter of the Month for May 2019. 6522, agreed to contribute the sum of $500,000 per year to the 13th Judicial Court for a period of three years.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think, this is the words of the administration, we are giving the police, giving their police officer each month a recognition. We're giving a firefighter a recognition, we need to move on down to the public service workers. They're out there, they get up four day in the morning, running behind that truck trying to pick up the garbage, and they're doing a great job. I think we need to move on down. It took us a while to add the fire department. It was just the police department at first. And then we added a fire department, and I think we need to move on down and pick up public service worker every month, bring that worker in here and parade that person and highlight the great job they're doing, just like we do the rest of our workers.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
I agree with Mr. Richardson. As a matter of fact, I have spoken with our interim director, John Peavy, about doing that several times. And I think the issue is if we try to get them some sort of bonus, that's the issue. If we just recognize them, then, you know, Mr. Peavy has brought down several before, and we can do that, but if we're trying to get them some sort of bonus, which I think would be great, there are some issues that have to be resolved before we, before we that happen. But I'm with you, I think we need to recognize them as well.
And I agree with both Mr. Richardson and Ms. Gregory. I'm hopeful that the same resources that we utilize to incentivize our public work, not public works, fire and police, those same resources ought to be available to incentivize our public works. Hopefully, during this budget process, that's something that we can, can make certain priority.
Want my comment?
Mr. Rich?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to speak with 60-522, which is the resolution to fund the courts in our county, which is a state obligation, but the state legislation was moving through our state house that would have taken funding out of our internet taxes. So, this is a way for us to control this locally. It is a three-year commitment, and it does have language that we will be given reports and we'll be able to keep our eye on it, and is not just a hope, but it needs to be very well-known that this is something that the state needs to deal with, to get the entire court system and how much they reimburse and what they take out of different counties. Again, this is something that now there should be a lot of eyes on this, and I would hope that within this three-year period, that it's a better level of funding that is mandated from the state and not sent down to county or money removed that we can't put towards the system. There has to be a level playing field here, or these kinds will keep happening on different levels with the state having the powers that it has over municipalities. So, I just think that needs to be so clearly understood, and I know that's the sentiment that is coming from this council.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
I agree with Mrs. Rich, thank you for that, and also want to thank our lobbyist, Ms. Beth Lyons, for putting this together. It will mirror what the county is doing. We had a judge here earlier, but I don't see him in the audience. But this, I think as they said, it's the best of the worst, so it's not something that we necessarily wanted to do. It's a lot of money coming from our, from our budget, money that we couldn't, we don't necessarily have to give, but it's money that we're going to have to provide in order to make sure that all of our residents, you know, have a speedy trial, get the kind of services that they need and deserve from our court system. And it's, it's just unfortunately, it's up to us to do it, and this money will stay here in Mobile County. It's not going to go to the state to be then distributed statewide. So, it's important for us to do this, and I agree that we look forward to having updates from our legislative delegation on their efforts to make sure that the state is finally able to pay what it is supposed to pay to keep our courts running the way they should be.
Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Williams. Davis, then Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support this because I don't think we really have a choice here. And go back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, it's really important to understand that legally, constitutionally, we are at the mercy of the state government. We don't, we don't have any constitutional right to fight them. If they decide they're going to do something with our revenue sources, they have, they have the power to do that. So, the only power we have is to lobby our state legislators to correct this problem over the next three years, because legally, we have no power to correct it. The only power we have is to lobby the legislators to get it corrected up in Montgomery. And I think that's something we need to keep in mind. I think we need to get, we need to keep, Councilwoman Rich has indicated very close eyes on this as we move forward over the next three years. We can't demand they take any action whatsoever, but, but we can lobby them, and hopefully we can get citizens to understand what the issue is, and that's the way, I think, to affect the long-term change. Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
I'd just like to point out, and I think everybody said it in a different way, that we can let the state take our money that they were going to send down to us, and them decide how much that is, or we can decide how much it is. And I would just assume the state turn loose of all the money that's, that's generated here. And I think it's, it's, I think we need to note that these are our citizens that are being served, and the county, there is no difference. This is, this means that the taxpayers of Mobile, which is a majority of the county, is going to be paying about $1 million a year for the next three years. And that's just, that's just the facts. We, we have to pay this, and it's time for our governor and our state legislatures, legislators to go back and take a look at the law and why it was written and why we charge court fees. We didn't, we don't charge court fees so that we can fund the state government. Over, I think it's something $127 million that's collected through our court throughout the state, and a very small fraction is returned to the court systems that are supposed to be serving. So, it is, while we, I don't know, we ought to write a letter, and I know that we can't demand it, we need to make it an election issue when our state legislators are up there, especially when we're talking about governor and those that have some voice, that is the Supreme Court of Alabama. We just, we just go out and vote for the person we like, and we need to start asking some very tough questions about what's going on. And if these people that are there now don't change this before the next election, then we need to make an effort to change them. Thank you.
Vice President.
Mr. Moore, let me get Mr. Richardson, he'll come right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comment's going to be a little different. It is said that it's time to take a look at the court system, and I think that's a correct I would support this this time, but if it comes back before I'm on this council, and there's not one judge on that bench that represent the majority of the citizens in this city, the majority group, it's not one judge up there. Go to Dallas County, some of the measly counties, they have African-American judges. Go to Montgomery, Jefferson County, then you get, you come down to Mobile County, about 75% of those people that are adjudicated, that colorful that bench are African-Americans, and it's not one judge up there to represent that group. While we are telling them, the legislative delegation, all this about money, you tell them that court system needs to be changed to reflect all of the citizens in the city of Mobile, and I'm glad we have Ms. Lyons here, she's a, she's the one, that can be our voice crying in the wilderness to let it be known that that is an injustice, an injustice anywhere, a threat to justice everywhere. We want justice, and I will not support the next time if the court, if the reflection of the court is the same.
Mr. Vaughn.
Man, that's a hard act to follow, though. Vice President, I do agree with my colleague, Mr. Williams. The citizens are spending money, especially the citizens inside the city limits of Mobile, spending through the city and also through the county. I mean, it's almost like double-dipping to help the state's court. And I also do agree with my colleague, Mr. Williams, about citizens needing to, you know, look at the candidate, you know, profile and what they're, they're means, not just because of popularity of names, because this issue can be settled, and it can be settled today, could have been settled, you know, a while ago. And again, it's through lottery and through casino. I don't play the lottery, and I don't play the casino. But we have money leaving our state every day going towards Mississippi, Florida, Georgia, and Tennessee. The money that going towards Florida, Tennessee, Georgia, and Mississippi can be staying right here in this state of Alabama, but because we have certain lawmakers that's in Montgomery that keep on fighting against the lottery and also casinos. Again, I have not been in jail, I have not been to court, to a state court, you know, but I'm supporting this. I don't play the casino, I don't go to, do the lottery, but I do support the lottery and casinos, because again, our state is still in the deficit, and we are still like issuing money to other states and supporting them besides supporting our own. I am supporting this with this initiative for the next three years, because we have so many people that are sitting in jail right now that are innocent. And when they, and they sit in jail and they are innocent, they can't take care of themselves, they take, take, take care of families, and it's putting a burden and a hardship on them. It's not just on the court system, but it's also a hardship on their family, by natural and mental. So, again, you know, we need to realize, you know, who are we voting for and their means, and for the betterment of our state, you know, not just because of what's better for us or just our belief, but what's the better for our state, because again, we're issuing money out to surrounding states, you know, keeping lottery and keeping casinos away from Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Madam Speaker.
We have to go.
All the way, there we go. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed.
CIP resolutions...
Thank you for all that you do, Ms. Lyons, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 25514.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 25514.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion. If not, all in favor, all, let me know by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
25514, authorize temporary construction easement agreement with Joseph M. and Joan Wigan, Wigan for 2018 CIP CW miscellaneous drainage repairs, Group B project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 09515 through 61519.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 09515 through 61519.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
09515, relocate $4,960 from Three Mile Creek Trail Management Capital Improvement Districts 1 through 7 to Mobile Greenway Initiative Grant Administration Funds. 09516, solution appropriating additional funds for the purpose of funding additional positions needed to support capital improvement projects. 23517, accept convenience of a quick claim deed from Van Vaughn Marzette for donation of approximately five acres of land for the Three Mile Creek Greenway. 61518, authorize memorandum agreement arising out of, on the job injury of Dave McDaniel III. 61519, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims Tyler Wyatt, Wyatt Arrington.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Like to discuss 09516, please, and that is, is beating our budget to not...
We've changed, changed that is a resolution appropriating additional funds for the purpose of funding additional positions needed to support.
Okay, so it's not, it's not technically a budget amendment, but I'm pleased to know that all these employees that will be funded with this resource are merit employees, and just like we learned last week that the, the merit employees were given their 2.5% increase, these... These are new jobs, so they would not qualify for that cost of living increase. But again, this was something that was, um, it, the council was in agreement with these employees getting their, their raise and we're glad that it went to the Personnel Board and passed and I understand it, it should make their checks in the appropriate timeframe that we were first told about when we learned about the first budget amendment and now this to add these jobs. The contention was at the time, the council was instructed not to, um, deal with any contractual appointments because of the lawsuit initiated by the mayor or the administration. And, um, fortunately, we had an outcome of trying to explain that to our city personnel by using the all-male system. I am again gonna ask the administration to please reconsider and allow that access to our city clerk. It is a great tool. It belongs to the community. The mayor certainly is using it as he should and so should the council be able to send messages via the clerk's office who works for the council. So I will ask them to please, um, restate that and not block access to it. And obviously, we are all at an even, um, point right now where merit system employees have been given their due cost of living raise via the Personnel Board, um, um, the item that we saw and it was, was the council's, um, initiative and also these extra employees that we now know are merit employees. And again, all of this could have been avoided. Unfortunately, it wasn't and, um, but giving access back to the city clerk would certainly help to repair everything and we could all continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Rich, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, I would just like to ask, uh, city clerk, do you think, uh, in carrying out your responsibility as city clerk, that it's necessary that you be able to contact city employees?
Um, it is a necessary, I mean, it's a necessary too, um, for me to communicate with all city employees on various levels for, um, releases for you all and also any other emergency situations or something that may come directly to my office that didn't go to the administration.
And I think that if, if the mayor is bound and determined not for you, not to use his system, I think we ought to be, uh, full speed ahead in creating our own system. Uh, the mayor is not the sole question who can do that. I think we need to get with our own professionals, create our own system, hit that button and make, we don't need to beg. We have, we have made that request. Evidently, his answer is no. His answer has been no one or number of things and we kept on going. And I think we need to keep on going on this one.
Madam City, Council Attorney?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, the item that we've been discussing, I think is right for us to move forward on. I totally agree with my colleague, Councilman Richardson. We've given enough time, in my estimation, for us to have come to, uh, some kind of a happy medium as it relates to communicating with all city. If there is any way that we can move forward with an ordinance that mandates how we'll, uh, move forward from a communication standpoint, I, I'd like for it to be on the agenda as quickly as possible.
Like next week?
As, as next week, as, as quickly as she can get.
I, I will circulate it so that you guys can give me your input before we run the agenda, um, if you like.
Sound like one. Thank you.
I, I have something else to say.
Mr. Davis?
Access to the city's email system is an administrative matter.
We'll work all that out, Mr. Davis. That, this isn't the germane place for us to have that discussion.
Well, you brought it up. You, you and the other counselors brought it up.
It's not on the agenda.
And now you're telling, and now you're telling I can't discuss it?
Mr. Davis, you're fighting, you're fighting a fight that hasn't even been fought. You don't even know what we're proposing and you're already waving a flag. You don't even know what we're proposing.
Mr. Chairman, maybe you should tell him, but in the meantime, you need to let him speak.
No, we don't.
At the end, uh, well, we, Madam City Clerk?
Vote.
We need to vote. Ready to vote.
Everybody's in favor, let be known by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, thank you, Mr. Davis and, uh, everyone else?
Call for, call for public hearings. Forty-one five two zero, forty-one five two one, call for public hearing to consider approval of certificate of public convenience and necessity to Norbert Zilanka doing business as our airtail, transportation shuttle and taxi service to operate a taxi service. Call for public hearing to consider approval of certificate of public convenience and necessity to Paul Dunning doing business as Premier Limo to operate a limousine service, both scheduled June eleventh.
This calls for public hearings.
So moved. Second.
Probably move the secondary discussion. If not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings are called.
Announcements, June fourth, Mobile City Council meeting will be moved to June the sixth on Thursday, regular time, ten thirty.
Uh, Mr. Davis?
Thank you. There will be a, uh, meeting of the special committee that was appointed by our chairman to look into the method by which the city disposes of city-owned real property. That meeting will be today at two o'clock PM in the council's conference room. The public is, uh, welcome to attend. Uh, just to refresh everybody's recollection, uh, we had had a prior meeting on this and were advised at that time that the administration was developing some, uh, policies, draft policies and procedures. Uh, those, those have been delivered, uh, to the council and, uh, I would expect that today that, uh, Mr. Christensen and perhaps some other members of the administration will be there and that we'll have an opportunity to go through, uh, those draft, that draft policy. Thank you.
Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. June fourteenth and fifteenth, there will be a homecoming event at the Hillsdale Recreation Center. I will be out there doing some meeting and greeting as well as providing letters from both the administration and the council, uh, for their program. Also, I just want to alert everybody that, uh, over the weekend, an alligator was spotted in Langen Park Lake, which is certainly something new. So just be on the lookout for that. When I got the photo and the alert from, uh, us who was walking there, I sent it off to our public safety director as well as others to make sure that they knew that, uh, the alligator was there. It was a three-to-four foot alligator. Don't know, don't know where from, but he was certainly in the park and we just want to make sure that everybody keeps their eyes open if they're around bodies of water because these alligators are certainly able to, um, get into lakes and places where you wouldn't necessarily expect them. So thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all.
No problem, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Rich?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our District One, Trinity Community Meeting will be held on Thursday, June twentieth in the Dodge Community Center, starting at six PM. I am especially pitted to the young men and women of Trinity Gardens to make a special effort to attend this June twentieth meeting because we will be focusing on jobs and job training. We're gonna have Walmart Distribution Center in the House, Arstur gonna have a representative there. We're gonna have a representative from Bishop State and they're, they're prepared to pay, pay, to pay you to come and, and be trained. They give you money to come and be trained. We're gonna have, um, our recruiter from the fire department there, he's gonna be making an appeal, trying to get new, uh, firefighters. We're gonna, uh, talk about, uh, the digits that's gonna be closed in Trinity Gardens and, uh, we're gonna lay out the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty CIP projects while we are there. So we're gonna ask all our citizens to please come out. It's gonna be a very informative meeting and, uh, hopefully, uh, some of the citizens will leave there with some leads on a good job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to thank everybody who played a role in seeing that the splash pad opened on time Memorial Weekend. It's very well received out there and, um, it's a very long list. I will put that in my newsletter to thank everybody appropriately. And again, um, keep it clean, keep pets out of it, please. And I understand that the city will be putting out the rules and please abide by the rules. I, I think that will be coming shortly when the splash pad, but thank, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Power? Okay, well, Mr. Williams? Okay, I'm saying, it sounds like a one. Okay. Well, I want to announce, uh, that today at three-thirty, we will be having the groundbreaking for, uh, the MLK basketball complex. Uh, we join hopefully by Commissioner, Ms. Yer Luttgood, Mayor Sandy Stimson. Uh, this is an important day for, uh, the residents on San Long Avenue. For many years, uh, that recreational amenity has not been available. The J.R. Thompson, uh, facility was sold to, uh, Franklin Healthcare. And so for many years, residents in that northern section did not have recreational amenity. We're gonna, uh, start that first phase in bringing that back on today at five-thirty. So hopefully, uh, we'll see each other at that time. Any further announcements, uh, from the members of council? Uh, anything on that end, uh, everything straight? Well, anything from the administration?
No, thank you.
All right, do I hear motion? Motion seconded in discussion? If not all in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
All right.